Hi there. How you feeling?
Much better.
Good. Provide that when I was in.
Twenty? Wow.
Nerd. Right? Okay. Five sixteen, we're gonna call the, here. We're gonna call the meeting order for the workshop.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Shwira is absent, and Mayor Mongi.
Here. Thank you. I gotta, to adopt agenda please. So move, so move. Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Councilmember Wong, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Topic, all you.
Oh, we got two topics tonight, man. Uh, first one up, the school resource officer, just to give an update. We have, uh, around here.
It's, hello, everyone. Um, yeah, just a recap. I'm sure you've seen it, uh, on the news, um, back in, uh, August, on the twenty ninth, they sent the letter to City Manager Frandl recommending that we pause the SRO contract with sixty-two due to the increased amendments in Minnesota statute one-two-one A. Turn with that. Statute development was how it passed without any stakeholder involvement from the city, law enforcement, or educators. Took a little while, few days after it was actually enacted, uh, it kinda started seeing what the language actually said, and that led to a lot of additional conversations. Since then, calling for clarity, and I'm still hopeful for the, the ultimate, uh, solution through additional legislative action to provide just concrete clarification on the whole topic. At that, on September twentieth, the Minnesota Attorney General released an opinion that is legally binding. Guess, did you get all of the attachments in? Over, just the highlights of, of each one, so that second opinion, that supplemental opinion from the general on September twentieth, uh, was released. But pursuant to Minnesota statute section eight oh seven, um, deeming that opinion by the Attorney General decisive until the question involved shall be decided otherwise by a court, and therefore it may be relied upon. From that opinion, we're looking for, is what we got was the amendment one-two-one A does not limit the types of reasonable force that may, may be used by school staff and agents to protect the armored death. It also does not limit the types of reasonable force may be used by public officers to carry out their lawful duties as described in Minnesota statutes section six oh nine oh six subdivision one. That for reasonable force remains unchanged and is highly fact-specific. So, uh, any officer, SRO, agent in the school working in the contract, back to having the lines of six oh nine oh six applied to any use. All calling for and, and hope for action, but we, uh, through, uh, Attorney. Um, additionally, in that letter, uh, Attorney General clarifies all police officers, including those who are SROs, or otherwise agents of a school district may use force as reasonably necessary to carry out official duties, including but not limited to making arrests and enforcing orders of the court. Um, and then just, uh, giving that more weight, just that section eight dot oh seven provides that on all school matters, the Attorney General's opinions like this one are decisive, and the Supreme Court, um, has also confirmed that opinion. Overruled by court. So a couple other, uh, folks weighed in, the League of Minnesota Cities, so this would be regarding our, uh, protection from civil liability. Our insurer, they released an opinion stating that school resource officers and officers contracted to work in a school district, they use reasonable, reasonably necessary force towards students under the circumstances enumerated in Minnesota statutes six nine oh six, so pointing back to the same, uh, use force statute that applies to all police officers. Further, in their opinion, uh, offered, the net practical effect is that SROs and contracted officers may use reasonable force towards students to carry out a duty that exists by virtue of law, but may not use force to enforce a school rule or policy. Uh, further from the league, um, they pointed to the September Attorney General opinion saying that it provides guidance that can be relied, relied upon pending further developments in the court. Section eight oh seven, which says Attorney General can make these opinions, and they are legally binding. They did offer that, or they did suggest that any agency wanting additional information should contact their attorneys to determine, um, if they will seek to challenge the September Attorney General opinion in court. Well, we reached out to Ramsey County Attorney John Choi. Letter from Ramsey County Attorney, uh, that's, he sent it out to all law enforcement agencies in, in Ramsey County. That letter said, I agree with Attorney General Ellison that on all school matters, Attorney General opinions like the opinion letter and supplemental opinion letter are decisive and legally binding on our office until overruled by a court of competent jurisdiction. From Choi's letter, it says, to be clear, my position is based exclusively on the explicit language of Minnesota statute section eight, section eight dot oh seven, giving us authority to the Attorney General and the well-settled case law interpreting that statutory authority. Issued further from, from Choi, issues addressed in both the opinion letter and supplemental opinion letter affect me as an elected county officer of which I am legally bound to follow. Absent a contrary decision by court of competent jurisdiction, we will follow the legal analysis and conclusions contained in the. We have our county attorney saying, follow the Attorney General's opinion. Um, because that hasn't happened in, it, uh, not the news, uh, versus backing. Uh, the postboard also weighed in, they concur with the supplemental opinion from the Attorney General, said from licensing protection, um, avenue for any officer working in the school. And almost, most importantly, I've been in constant communication with our, our current juvenile investigator, uh, likely soon to be, uh, SRO again, Joe Allen. Every single step along the way, I've been sharing information with him, having a lot of conversations, cause I, I wanted to make sure he was comfortable with us getting back under contract and him working in the school, uh, contract with everything going on. I didn't want Joe to be comfortable. You know, under contract. Oh, absolutely is comfortable, uh, he assured me of that. Good job in there as a juvenile investigator and, and school resource officer. Also had a lot of conversations with the school district throughout this whole thing. Uh, they're supportive of, they understood why, you know, we were asking clarity throughout the whole thing, but they are also looking forward to getting back under contract with us. Uh, I do think that legislative corrections are still needed in that statute to get that concrete fixed and, and go about it the right way and have conversations with everybody that should have been there. Ask what, what everybody agrees is makes sense and is, is statute, so. Promise to do that within the first couple weeks. Questions, so, so that is all through. Happy to field any questions. Uh, it's been a long, several weeks and a couple months of SRO stuff, but.
If we sign the contract and something happens later that either makes you or Joe uncomfortable, um, what happens?
Um. Like, we wouldn't wanna be back in the con-
Yeah, if, if for some reason, uh, the legal opinion changes, that makes either you or Joe uncomfortable, so we'd like to take a step back in signing the contract, um?
We, uh, we can get out of the contract, I think. There's language in there that allows us to out of the contract.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you're, you know, we have your back, and if something changes, we're not backing into the corner by any stretch.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're making the news, the kids making the news.
Yeah, my kids are, uh, background.
Um, I, I, I too wanna thank you. Um, there's, you never know what the straight story is when the primary in, in information you're getting comes from the news. So, thank you for, for showing up tonight and then walking us through it, cause you touched on my two things. It was on the consent agenda, so I made the assumption all were comfortable with it, but I wanna make sure Joe was comfortable and you were comfortable. So, cause I think you got the backing of, you know, you got the backing of us to make sure that you know we got your back.
Thank you, and I appreciate, you know, maintaining that relationship with this all. We're ready.
Yeah, we work, uh, pretty seamlessly with this. We actually just had a meeting with State trying to, uh, problems together, so, yeah, gotta pre-
It's good, thank you. All right. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next up, jumping into the twenty twenty-four enterprise. Mr. Winnick, our finance director, take us off.
A reminder for everybody out there and in here, we still don't have our normal audio, so we'll try to speak up as much as we can, so everybody in here can hear us, along with people at home, so. Sorry about that, but, uh, our board's on live support, and they don't seem to be getting the back to us.
Having a little problem, I'd like to.
Oh.
I limp a little bit down.
Jenny kick you too.
That's like she moved.
Tough room.
It is, it's a-
There should be a lot more gold stars on your laptop.
Wait a minute, I'm not comfortable now.
Start off tonight, so, uh, we're gonna, tonight we're talking about our, our enterprise fund. We have six of them, and enterprise fund is, is basically where the majority of your revenue comes from the exterior, in other words, from our residents. So, um, what you'll, uh, see here, that we have six, we have the water fund, uh, wastewater fund, electric, surface water, solid waste, and the fiber optic. And, uh, for the twenty twenty-four, right now for the water fund, we have re- revenues estimated about two point two million, our budget at about one point five, uh, fund balance is, is to increase about six hundred dollars. The significant changes are charges for services increased, uh, ninety-one, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars as compared to twenty-three, slight increase in estimated usage, uh, staying the same as wastewater fund, we've got revenues of about two, six million, uh, budgets, uh, about two point six million, fund balance increase of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. This one will require a four percent, um, increase in our rates. Significant change is the decrease in the supplement plan. Thousand dollars compared to electric fund, um, revenues of, uh, just under two, uh, twelve million dollars, budget of just under thirteen million dollars. This would be a decrease in, uh, fund balance of about one point one million dollars. The significant change is, this is where, what's being proposed is bring out of the electric. Uh, the state would not change. Surface water fund, uh, revenues of approximately a million dollars, budget fifty thousand, fund balance increase of one would require a significant supplement plan of about a hundred solid waste, revenues are estimated about a million dollars, uh, fund balance decrease of a hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, changes contractual thousand dollars. Part of, uh, what we're seeing on there is that we're under contract till next year with our current, um, client provider, um, they're entitled to a three percent increase on an annual basis, but bigger driving factor is, uh, the Ramsey tier G, um, seventeen point five percent increase in their and then we have the fiber optic funds. Changes, um, fiber optics, this is the, um, that we have a negative, uh, fund balance, negative cash rate, it'll take us another twenty. And any questions on a high level before I invite up a couple of very distinguished , uh, department heads, and their enterprise funds? And that's kind of the high level overview, um, we will kinda talk about each one of their enterprise fund, um, some highlights, and then turn it over if you have any questions. Well, the first, um, department head is, uh-
We have a question on the fiber one.
Sure.
You said twenty years to make up for it?
At this rate, yeah.
How many years have we had the fiber?
I'm not one hundred percent sure, do you, Brian, do you?
And we're still that far out for making money? What?
Fund has been paid off.
Well, it has to pay for itself, and so, the fund itself, it shows a negative fund balance. What we do on the financial statements, we shouldn't have a negative fund balance, there is an internal cash loan that is given from the electric fund to cover the two million dollar cash deficit, which actually on a financial statement, look, it breaks even, it's zero, but it has a loan in there for over a decade, it's got years of port actually has positive fund balance at the rate that, there, this, and there's a couple of others that are decisions that have been made in the past that is for the emphasis so much, and we'll have a special meet Monday, uh, to move proven plan, and you can see how it does have a significant impact on some of budgets. That's where, you know, for you to decide what's in, what else can have a significant impact. Rates that we pass on to and if you're in agreement with what's being presented to you in the CIP, it also means what we've already kind of discussed and we have in the seminary, um, but where you have that two percent abilities.
All right.
With that, uh, John, do you wanna come up and, uh, kinda go through the and I'll kinda pull up the-
Say again, as loud as you can talk, please.
Got it.
Thank you. Only one has a big mouth here is the mayor, I think, so, letter buck.
All right. Um, are all set from here? Sure, we're, we're ready, I'll pull up your so on page twenty-eight, it begins the electric. Uh, John actually budgets his, um, electric in four different divisions inside here, you're seeing just one total, so it adds up everything that's alike in item, um, and for, um, men, underground, overhead, and substation. Substation. For illustrative purposes here in the budget, we show it just all.
Yeah, John? Yeah, um, just to start off, uh, thanks for having me. Um, the, I just wanted to start off with, uh, like, the goal of our, of our department, and that's just to buy safe and reliable power to all the residents in North St. Paul, and then, uh, the surrounding communities that we supply. Get ourselves on providing rapid response times and, uh, typically limit power outage just to, um, under an hour. Things we do to ensure this, um, viability is, uh, we upgrade our, our infrastructure, where we convert old red lines to underground, old under, underground ri- lines with new ones, and we also install new underground in new construction zones. And then, uh, we also maintain our current system to try and prevent shortages and damage. Some of the things that, uh, kinda highlighted twenty twenty-three for us was lighting lake, I don't know if you noticed there, we added a bunch of lighting up there, uh, downtown, uh, getting increased. The Lily Construction, uh, a major project, we're buil-, uh, burying a main feeder, one of four in town, a, a good section of it. All these things kinda come together to, uh, establish, you know, the, the main projects that we wanna go for, for the, the coming years. Twenty twenty-four, we have some things on the horizon, uh, the, the potential development for the seventeenth and Delaware area, uh, we have here that would have to be buried there. There's, uh, the Shifsky's, um, asphalt plant, uh, loop the primary there to try and increase the reliability in the area. Um, and then there's a, an area along Jennifer Lane and Ariel, uh, that has cable from mid-eighties that should some of the things you can note here, uh, our, uh, statistics, just twenty twenty-two and the red underground, uh, all of our construction, uh, it was just kind of a transitional year for us, but you can see that in twenty twenty-three, we started to pick back up with old underground wire and and see in the bottom as well that, uh, there is no projected, at this time, no projected rate increase residential rates. Our agency kinda dictates that, and as of now, they don't have projected increase, uh, but they don't really give us a solid answer till here, usually close. Some of the, uh, financial impacts here, um, to the, uh, personnel budget decreasing, uh, that was simply because we had an extra position on our crew, uh, prepping for retirement. Right now, we're fully staffed, um, with linemen, maybe a little higher apprentice to journeyman ratio than we would like, but journeyman in there, really good at training these guys, so. Thank you guys for the jobs that we're completing. That, uh, there's a substantial increase in the supply expense budget, uh, the two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, that's combining the materials for overhead and underground. Main driving factors for that would be, um, the increased cost of those materials. An example I could give you would be our residential pad mount transformers. Twenty-five KVA transformers supplies power to about seven, maybe ten on the high-end houses. Thousand one, we could buy one of those transformers for about two thousand dollars. Just recently, we purchased six twenty-five KVA transformers and they bought five thousand dollars a piece. That's the lowest that we could find. Major con, uh, distributors out there that were charging anywhere from sixty-five hundred to eight thousand dollars. To go along with that as well, um, seeing, um, very long lead times. Part of the increase in the budget is to try and, our stock in the yard, so that we don't have to deal with those lead times as much. We're seeing anywhere from a year to two years on those pad mount transformers and not just that, it's any upgrade our infrastructure. And quite, requires a lot more, um, planning and preparing portion of the budget we put ourselves in. Another thing you can see here is the, um, there's a decrease in the contractual, contractual service expenses. That would have to do, uh, that's my understanding, it has to do with the, uh, credit card service charges, paying their bills, um, credit card charge. And the debt payment, debt service expenses, that's, uh, decreasing as well, uh, my understanding as well that, uh, the, our, we've almost paid down holding. That's almost nine one.
Twenty-five is all done.
As I stated, there's no, um, projected rate increase. And then, part of our, major part of our budget going into twenty-four will be the, the transfer of the one point one million dollars to help kickstart the street maintenance program, um, along with the, uh, normal annual three hundred thousand dollar transfer to the general fund to help, uh, reduce the impact of the general fund budget on the, uh, residents. Um, we're able to do this, cause we do have a good balance in our electric fund. I think it's also important to note that we do have a good balance, um, there are, there's a reason that we try to keep a good amount of money in that fund, and that's just because the event of some sort of catastrophic failure or a severe storm. Our entire town is powered by a single transformer. Half of that transformer, it would be north of a million dollars to have means to divert power, point again in the meantime, but cost of that, um, and so, the same with, um, there's four main feeders in town, we're duck line all the way to the center of town, and then they branch out. We're duck line all the way to the center of town and then they branch out. Happen to any one of them feeders, we potentially facing, uh, large charges to replace them. And that's why we keep. Chance of an emergency like that. I do feel good about it. Our transformer is, um, twenty-five years old. There's some of the transformer in the next bay that belongs to XL is from. But they had another one identical to it that got replaced.
Month, I guess that.
Yeah. So that kinda, uh, just a point I wanted to, just a reminder. I'd touch real quick on the, um, increase in the capital. There's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. That's, uh, every year is on there for. Underground infrastructure, uh, namely the, the duct line. And you'll see that there's, um, oh, there's the thirty-two thousand for the electrical vehicle, vehicle charging stations. And four hundred and thirty-two thousand for. Equipment and vehicles. Uh, of that, it's kinda broken down into three main things we're looking at. Generator trailer that we would be putting with the, uh, wastewater, uh, backup power, uh, and mostly it provides power for list. Fifty years old, so. And pick up that we need to, uh, upgrade to all of actor trailer that, uh, is very large and it taxes our other truck. Have a bucket truck. Main reason for the bucket truck replacement would be, uh, we, it's. Configuration on that bucket that's not ideal for jobs that we're trying to complete. It does serve a purpose and there are things about it that we would wanna keep. In order to better utilize, utilize a truck like that, uh, we would need a new bucket configuration. It would help us extend the life, useful life, all of our bucket trucks by. No, not, yeah, I'm, I apologize. It would replace that one. The truck's from, uh, two thousand, uh, three years old. We just don't wanna put ourselves into a similar situation that we're in now. We've ordered a replacement for one of our other bucket trucks and. Hang on about two years since we converted to. We should get it this spring though. Had to limp this truck along to try to get to that. So that's the reason for the, the larger number there. Really, that's kinda the main points I wanted to, to touch on. And if there's anything that sticks out to you guys and you wanna ask me about.
No, I, no, I don't.
I thought we had already talked about that.
What the heck are you doing?
What's the longevity of the transformer? I mean, you have XL that nineteen sixty-seven, but what's the?
I mean, it's hard to say, uh, I mean, a perfect world, it's, it's fully efficient when you load it down as much as you can. I don't think we've overloaded the transformer any means, but. Well, I wish I could tell you a definite answer, um. Fifty years? That's a lot, broad range, but that's what.
When you say overload, what?
Um, so, um, like a, a transformer is designed to be run at like a hundred and ten percent of its capacity. To, uh, so you lose. Majority of the losses on that piece. Well, it's designed to be run hard. But there was a str- a stretch of time when XL was on us that it really worked that transformer hard. Probably overloaded it for a stretch of time. But we have, every three years, we have a, a company come out and do maintenance on our substation. They were actually out two weeks ago and did the top to bottom inspection. They drained the oil out of our tap changer, which it increases and decreases the voltage as demand rises and lowers. Um, minor things with that, that, you know, there's no concern immediately, but maybe the next maintenance around, we might have to. For some parts, it won't be anything.
Do you defer the maintenance every two years?
Three right now.
Three right now. What's recommended to them?
Two to three years, yeah. Um, they actually, well, five is the standard. They've recommended since ours is of that age that it's every.
Okay.
Any other questions for John? I have a question and I don't know if it should be for John or you, Dan, um. I- if we are in a position where we can transfer one point one out of the electric, um, I have been asked and foresee myself getting asked again, how, how, as a resident, do you not form the opinion that you're being overcharged? Um, i- i- if we can tr- take one point one million out of that account. Um, if you were in my seat, how would you guys respond to that?
Well, I think it's a pretty simple response and yes, you've been overcharged through the years. I were, you know, proposing no rate increase this year. Utility company does increase the rate. And a budget is prepared, it's prepared on the. It's not considered a part of that revenue that we're projecting here today. Have increasing res. Historically, um, the electric. Are as, uh, on expense. Um, where it gets very conservative, uh, not, uh, adding to your fund. Um, but yes, I mean, fundamentally, you've been overcharged. Sure, and that's why the recommendation. Oh, we were. Not to pass on all of the. Um, no, it's, it's the bottom line to it is, um, it has been very well managed through. Tough decision, uh, we. Means we can't start the street project. Or we would have. Like we shared, uh, the. Giving enough unbalance, um, first with, uh, age increases. For a naked fund, um, comfortable in case there is a topic loss. So, to answer your question, the simple is, yes, there has been overcharge, that's why, why you. Get a fund balance, it wasn't designed. Intent. The reserve policy, um, our fund balance reserve policy, um, definitely we look at that, um, the. Next year's operating budget that you need to make. Four months worth, so. Budget, you know, and. Sort of that's why I mean you need. Also need to have some capital. One and a half to two. So you should be having a fund balance of. Um, I believe you could look. In that that was prepared. Two, I think the fund balance was underneath the six million. However, from a cash basis, it's much higher. Why does it look, the difference of, you know? Because just for hyper optics, that needs two million dollars, so it does negative balance. Then there's another, um, loan that city council had passed. Million dollars. Is a quick. Now, we're, we're starting to get the full amount of tax increment from that, from that district, um, this. See that? Being able to pay the electric fund. Four percent interest. So, uh, in our financial plan, that revenue. Put it in.
Four months reserve.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, our, our policy is four months plus your next year's debt payment, you know?
Yeah. That's kind of.
So that, I guess that leads to my next question, with a capital improvement request from twenty-five to thirty-three, um, for a four point five million. Um, th- that is gonna need in capital. Um, are we better off rather than a transfer, a interdepartmental loan? Rather than the straight up transfer, because we're gonna need that money, um, from the year twenty-five to thirty-three?
Um, again, go back to the financial plan that was presented, there are some increases that are gonna. Here's the bigger question. To do a loan, what do you pay the loan? And the answer is, you'd need to raise your levy to get back that million dollars plus in. For percent. A forger, I usually use five percent at eight. At one point six. But. Of all one point five, one point five, uh, in that you're gonna end up. Probably you got an additional one and a half percent levy increase. And if the city council's, you know, willing to do that, we can't this year, but, um. One way or the other, it's, it unfortunately, it, it residents. Well, again, this one point one million dollar transfer is a one-time. Moving on, that's where the plan of the two percent increase is dedicated. Been covered from that point. There is a decision that's altered that, as we go through the capital improvement plan, that if it is the desire not to do the transfer, uh, we certainly. Certainly have the right to, to not do the street improvements that we have in the C I P for.
For a interdepartmental loan? From a city enterprise fund to a city general fund, do you have to charge interest?
Um, I don't think there's anything spectacularly that tells us that we have to. Charge any interest.
I appreciate that.
And on the, how much, um, of North St. Paul is buried and how much is area for residents?
Um, well, you're talking about like, um, the high voltage is probably fifty fifty. Services. Area it's. Thirty, thirty percent or.
Thirty percent buried?
Forty percent on the secondary side, so lower voltage. But mainline, yeah, uh, well, yeah, main for the houses or to feed points for the houses.
Present buried.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
There, um, did work to get more buried or is Ariel still perfect? You know, I know that we have a lot of trees in North St. Paul, a lot of branches and.
Yeah.
Different things like that, is there been, oh, to work to try to get more buried for residents? Or is it kinda the way it is, Ariel's Ariel, it's gonna stay Ariel?
It's, so when it comes to like a high voltage line, that's our goal every year is to bury. Uh, uh, we look at different areas. This overhead underground, so every year we do projects like that. It comes to residential services and inline service wire. It's difficult because. Um, uh, from a place of. Not only the, the cost for us to bury those lines, but also. A house serviced has a meter. That needs to accept our underground wires and you're either charging the residents. For their, every service, or each service needs to be paid by a resident. And then they have to hire an electrician to do the inside work to upgrade their meter box and their panel. Or do you eat it with the utility and it's, um, price?
So the box in the house is, could be different if it's burial or?
Uh, yes, it all, so there's many old meter boxes on the system that are. They're no bigger than the meter hardly. We can't run underground wire into those. Run, every service we run underground is set for two hundred amp wire or odd, it's pretty large. We require a two hundred amp meter box on the house to install. Don't have to have a two hundred amp service panel, but it does cost money to get them two hundred amp. Now there's old code out there to have. Bypass in the meter box and a, um, a disconnect and that's.
Just gotta ask that, you know, Ariel is gonna still be or people are planning on getting things more buried to residents, so just we.
Yeah, we slowly pick away at it. If people want services, we'll do them. I.
Okay, thanks.
Cut a few.
One more, if you don't mind, um, depending on what happens later today, a- and I know no one knows what the outcome of it is. We are gonna be giving a presentation about the one twenty corridor. Um, the, the lines on the west side of one twenty, are, are those a North St. Paul line? And will this project potentially have great or little to no impact on you?
Uh, the ones on the west side are. North St. Paul and there's actually some on the east side too, not the main ones that run north south, but. Yeah, I mean, there's, it, I couldn't put a number on it, but, uh. It, it would all depend on how corridor shapes out if, you know, I heard it was a walking trail that would potentially. Then, uh, there's. Lighting along the walking.
A- a- and this will be kinda my initial big project like that, is funding like that, on a project like that, is there assistance? You know, I, I mean.
I don't know, certainly.
C- cuz this would be a, a, a project funded by the county, correct?
And I don't know a lot about the.
Your state, okay.
Yeah.
County's right there, everybody together.
I see on your, um, memo that, um, you have E V charger on there. Um, I think there's quite a, a bit of grants out for that, um, right now, so I. It passed a lot, um, for E V chargers, so, uh, might be able to recoup some.
Yeah, um, I haven't really been involved in the, the selection of those yet.
A question to, to, um, I don't know if city council is aware, there is a certain percentage of things. Has to be spent in energy conservation. Type of methods, so the C V station would count for, for stat. The grant in there would have to be somewhere else at that. Energy conservation.
I don't know.
That money can be spent for that cuz you're not saving any energy necessarily by plugging the vehicle in, but, um.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't qualify, then yeah, then a grant. And if it doesn't qualify, then yeah, then a grant.
Oh, yeah, there's, um, all, both phases of the Seventh Ave reconstruction, there's. Will be infrastructure upgrades rather than. Not having, we, we won't have to essentially dig up. Birds again.
All good?
John, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Come on down, Mr. Public Works Director Ron Ritchie.
This is a long wait, you guys are icing me up.
Mm-hmm. No.
There you go. We're done.
All those are fair enough.
Ron is going to cover the water, the waste water fund and the surface water fund.
Yes, so, um. Thanks for having me, um, any questions that you guys have along the way here? I got a lot of stuff to go over, I'll kind of make it quick, what do we got till six thirty?
Twenty-five.
Six twenty-five?
You only have five minutes.
I only have five minutes. All right, water, water, um, obviously our main goal, provide safe and reliable water service to the city of North St. Paul. What's great about North St. Paul, we don't chlorinate our, any of our water, which we're one of like a couple of cities in North St. Paul that are left with that, so. Anytime we do a street project or anything like that, we're super careful on what we do and make sure the contractors are super careful, so we don't have to go to something like that. If we had to chlorinate our wells or chlorinate our water, it'd be a, a kind of a big deal, so, and an added expense. Uh, a, a, a lot of the stuff that, or a lot of the money or, or budget here, um, for what we do for maintaining our system. Um, we, we do well rehabs on, on our water wells, there, that goes off of kind of how much they're pumped or how much you use them. Um, they're usually every five to seven years, um, where the whole well gets pulled out. Um, the wells in North St. Paul are roughly about four hundred and fifty feet deep. Um, we have five wells, wellhouses in North St. Paul, two water towers. Um, in the CIP, when we start talking about that, we'll, we'll, next week, um, but there's a kind of plans in the future for additional wa- or not additional one. To replace the water tower, we just need some more capacity. Um, not because increased people, but it's, we've kind of been under, um, for fire and there's a whole formula that goes with the storage and we're under capacity for that storage. Um, the tank on the north side of town would be, is a three hundred thousand gallon tank that would be, get replaced with a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank. Um, it, it's been this way for a, a long, long time, um, it's just something that we have budget for, we're looking for in the future that, that we may. Um, but again, we can talk about that, um, in the CIP. Our well buildings, a lot of the well buildings, um, have not been rehabbed or anything done actually with the building, so that we put some extra money in the budget for that. Um, to do kind of each year, and we're not doing major tear downs of the buildings, it's more, you know, just kind of. Gussying them up, you know, cleaning them up, um, just to make them, you know, look nice. Um. Fire hydrant repairs, uh, fire hydrants in town, we have a lot of really old fire hydrants, a lot of fire hydrants that we open up that spray all over the place, there's, there's some Iowa fire hydrants. The cost of fire hydrants, um, have, has, you know, doubled, um, just in the past few years. So, uh, just the cost of a fire hydrant and parts is about sixty-five hundred dollars, used to be about three thousand dollars. Um, and then if, if, if we can install them or replace them, we try to do that. Um, but having a contractor do that, it's a, probably another six thousand dollars to have one of those hydrants put in, so. Um, with the budget we have, with the water, we got to kind of work within that, but there's a lot of things that are very expensive, you know, for. The water service part of it. Uh, water main breaks, um. We have actually a line item now that, or we put it in the CIP, right? At, Dan? For, for water main, I think for water main breaks and I wanted it kind of spec- or I wanted it line itemed out because if we have like a water main break on a county road. Believe we had one a couple of years ago and it was in the intersection of, uh, South and McKnight. I think the whole thing that there, the loops for the electric that we had to take out, the repairs in the road, we have to concrete the road in the winter and then come back, tear it back out and bring it back to SPAC. It ended up being like a thirty-five thousand dollar repair by the time it was all done. And for like, you know, one of our line items for this water repairs, we have like forty thousand dollars for the whole year. So a water main break can, and we fix our own water main breaks, we don't contract that out, uh, we checked into that before. And one of the biggest thing is the timing of when they could get out to do it and the other thing, the expense of it, um, to do, I mean, it's about. An average of twenty thousand dollars, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to have a water main break repaired and it could be twenty-four to forty-eight hours before they could get out. So we do repair all of our own water main breaks, we have our, you know, the equipment. Something so we can take care of that and get residents, you know, back in water service as quickly as we can. Um. Water meters and the radios that we have, um, they were installed about fourteen years ago, we switched everything over from the old meters to a newer electronic meter and the electronic reading. Those meters have a twenty year life to them, there's a battery in them and the radio, so we're, in, again, we'll be talking about this in the CIP. But that's going to be something that we're going to have to go through and replace all the meters in town, um, over a three to four year period. There's, I think, the forty-five hundred dollar, or forty, forty-five hundred residents or hookups that we have, um, for them. Um, each setup right now is probably three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars, so you can kind of do the math on that, what that will be. And then to go in and replace all these meters, but that's something that, um, I'm looking for in the CIP. Um, manhole structures, um. There's, uh, the manhole structures, the castings are metal, we put down a lot of salt in that. Well, I shouldn't say we put down, we put down the minimum salt we can to make things safe, but it's a double edged sword because we want to make the road safe for everyone, but that does wreck our infrastructure. Um, the catch basins, our manhole structures, the growth that these were put together with, um, a lot of manhole structures that we have were built with bricks. Brick and mortar over the years, so eat, order like crazy, so you can open up. Any, any manhole that we have and there's not in good shape. So again, with the budget that we had to work with in, um, instead of digging a lot of these up, digging the whole thing up, um, there's some companies out there that rebuild them from the inside. They kind of make a form for concrete around it and, you know, it's, uh, maybe a twenty-five hundred dollar repair versus a twelve thousand, twelve to fifteen thousand dollar repair. But there's a lot of that stuff in the water side of things. Now there's manholes for water, there's manholes for, uh, sanitary sewer and there's manholes for storm sewers, so. In each one of these budgets, that's kind of, that's across the board and all those, it's a, you know, it's. One of those has many, many of those manholes. Um. Lead service line inventory, uh, it's a mandate from the state that's got to be done, which every resident or every service in town, we have to try to find out whether it's, there's a, there's a lead service. We don't have great records of that from over the years. Um, this can be accomplished in a couple of ways, uh, scratch tests. There, there's some water tests that, that don't work really well, but this has got to be done by October, I think sixteenth of, of twenty-four. So we're working with, um, WSB, our engineering firm, with coming up with a plan because we have to try to inventory all those. The hard part about it is it has to be on the, um, it's got to be on the. The residents in North St. Paul own their whole service, you have a curb stop in your yard or a water shut off in your yard. So it could be different from the water service or to the main, from the waters, and, and then from the water service to going into your house. It can be two different things. So to try to, and to try to find out what is on the side going from the curb stop to the main. Um, they even talked about having to excavate to try to find out what those are, obviously this won't get done in a year, but we have to, we know or we don't know. Kind of come up with a list and this is statewide, everyone's got to do this, but again, that's something that is coming up that we have to work on. Before. Um. And I'm kind of playing through this quick. Any questions so far or anyone, anyone has any questions on any? Um, I know there's the increase in contractual service, this is for rebuilding some manholes, we're trying to, you know, replace so many each year. Um, to have contractors work on those to help us out, we just don't have the capacity. We do fix, um, some, we, we take some, a few weeks out of the year and send our guys out, send crews out doing that. Um, but just to try to stay on top of those, because when we have bricks falling in, they fall down into our sewers and, um, going through and, you know, trying to stay on top of it as best we can. Um. Yeah, that's kind of a quick thing on water. Any questions? Okay, uh, wastewater. Um, I guess wastewater, um, the big, the biggest thing with wastewater that we, um, work on each year is. Try and water infiltration into our, into our sanitary sewer lines. Um, that is by replacing, uh, structures, uh, castings, they have sealed lids now that they put in that they never had years before. They used to have lids with even holes in them for the pick, there'd be vented ones, but any rain that goes down gets in your sanitary sewer system, we pay for that water exiting town. Um, there's a big meter, our, all of our, our sewage flows onto, um, at council, so we have a big meter that exits, exits town and that meter, that's how we get billed. For our sewage for the, for the year. Um, I believe it's about, uh, roughly one, a little over a million dollars to get rid of that, so. Anytime, um, that we, when we have a street project or a road project, you know, everything is spec or you have to put in these lids that there's basically rubber gas going, it just helps with that. That I and I or that infiltration of that. Um, sanitary, uh, the sewer cleaning and televising, um, our policy for the city is, do we get through the city once, or once every three years, we're through the whole city, so we're on a three year. Rotation for that, we, that is our policy, so if there's a sewer backup in someone's home, the insurance companies, they call us, we give them all the information. They want to know the date we were out there, the last time we were out there cleaning it, what we used to clean it, what, you know, all the information we can, and because we can't. We can't prevent what gets, gets put down in that sewer and you can't believe what gets put down in the sewer, but, um. We just, we, we, sixth, our policy is something that we, we are very diligent about, making sure that, um, these lines get cleaned, um. At once every three years for sure. Uh, we have a, we've been hired, we hired a company, HydroClean, the last couple of years that, that come in, they are helping us do some cleaning and televising everything that we, that we have. Um, this televising, it shows us, it has helped us for future projects, if we're coming up to a road project or if we're going to do a street maintenance overlay project. Uh, we might have an opportunity to go in there and say, hey, this sewer's in good shape, there's not a lot of humps or ups and downs in it. And we can have it, that sewer lined without digging that up. And that sewer gets lined and it's like a brand new sewer, um, and a lot of the problems that we have are roots going in the sewer. Um, sewer pipe back in the day, they were clay pipe, um, there are three foot sections, they just got put together, stuck together, there was not, no real, you know. Steel on there and roots get in there and that's, you know, kind of number one problem for, um, sewer backups. Um. Also, we have four, four lift stations in town, um, lift station basically is a lower part of town that, um. Where all the main sanitary sewer lines are higher than that area, so there's a lift station where a certain neighborhood will flow into that. And then it's just a big catch basin and once it gets to a certain height, then it gets pumped up and pumped out into the, the whole system in town is gravity fed, our system is gravity fed. So everything is sloped out to where it runs out, so there's four areas in town that have lift stations that, so we can accommodate these lower areas. Um, the lift stations, obviously, uh, if they stop working for any reason, you know, we could be in danger of a neighborhood. Having sewer backup, all right, so this is hooked to a SCADA system, which we monitor, which monitors our wells that pump, which monitors those lift stations. Um, so we have maintenance that's done on that, we're in the process right now of kind of upgrading some of the software and the SCADA stuff on there so we can, um, really monitor these, um, a lot closer. In the fifteen, sixteen years I've been here, you know, we used to go out, there's a red light on it, if there's something wrong, that would be flashing. You'd go in there, open the door, try to figure out what's, what's wrong, but someone would have to call and say, hey, this is, uh, flashing. We'd have guys coming in the weekends to ma- go through and check these, make sure everything is working, but with these, uh, SCADA systems that we have now, we can do it, guys can do it out, right off their phone, every one of the guys on the crew. Um, has it on their phone, there's a calling list, it goes Randy or myself, Randy, and then it goes down the list and it goes to our call center that calls us, so. We get emailed, we get texts, we get called, we get whatever it might be, so, um, the SCADA system, keeping that thing up and current and running is super important to, to assure that, you know. We minimize any backups that anyone has or people have water or if a well stops working or anything like that. Um. Yep. Yes, for sanitary sewer, that's kind of the main things we do with that, any questions on that? Am I really?
No.
No, you're doing good.
You're doing great.
Just did a good job, it's all flowing.
Good, that was, that was, that was.
Little sad joke, huh?
Totally.
Now on to surface water.
Surface water, um. Surface water, um, we work with our engineering service to keep compliant with our MS four permitting, um, illicit discharges, people dumping oil down storm sewers, uh, you know, it's. The salt's going down the storm sewers, again, it's a double edged sword, you know, all the salt we put down into mountain going down the storm sewers. It's way at storm sewers, um, but now, and the, the big thing with stormwater stuff right now is when we do a road project. They have these formulas, it's way over my head, it's all engineering stuff, but they, you have to collect a lot of this rainwater that comes off the road. And you'll see a lot of the, the rain gardens they talk about, um, these ponds they put in, and what those things ultimately do is they filter all the, a lot of the bad stuff out before it hits our. Sanitary, or storm sewers and goes into our ponds. So when you do a road project, like one of the Seventh Avenue road projects, they end up, we end up buying a house, tearing it down, putting a storm pond in. And that was all per their calculations that you have to do for amount of road surface you're replacing and doing. But in these ponds, um, they plant certain plants that go around these things and those have to be maintained. And. Years ago, we would, the public works would try to go maintain these, these would get overgrown, we didn't know what plants or what they might plant, fifteen hundred plants or twelve hundred plants. Myself included, go out there and be like, all right, let's pull this stuff out, we gotta, can't have this and can't have that, and we probably pulled out seventy-five percent of the good stuff and left the weeds. Cause we don't know what the heck is what, so. Anyway, we have hired a company over the years because all the ponds, each year that goes on, each road project that goes on, we have more ponds to maintain. So there's a company that does this, they, Prairie Restoration, they come in, my Silver Lake, you know, these bio filtration pond, ponds that go in and they get maintained properly. This year is the first year, they've been doing it over the years, they usually do it when a new project goes in because it needs to be maintained for like two years for the project. But we just have those on, that's in, isn't something that we add, this is a twenty thousand dollar, um, per pond vegetation management that we add, so they get maintained properly. A lot of these have, you can't drive equipment in them because a lot of the ponds, uh, they dry out or they drain out the bottom, there's, uh. Drain tile and stuff in them, so the ponds end up being dry ponds at the end of the day, so there's a lot going on, there are a lot to them with that. Um, street sweeping, um. The watershed district wants us to sweep more and more and more, they want us to get out and get, get stuff swept, you know, swept up as best, you know, as often as we can. We, the city of North St. Paul, we do a really good job of it, a lot of cities, they get out, you know, two or three times a year, we have. We at, on average, are out five to seven times a year sweeping. The, the big cost with this stuff is getting rid of your street sweeping. It's really hard to 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 get rid of your street street, street sweeping. We actually haul our stuff tomorrow. Um, I probably shouldn't be saying this to other cities. Yeah, but we save, um, about a thousand dollars a load by hauling it to there. Um, in town, if we haul it over here out to Burnsville, would be our closest spot, and it's like twelve hundred dollars. We get rid of it for like two hundred and thirty dollars a load. The little drive, but it's, you know, getting rid of it, so street sweeping is a big thing with, you know, the stormwater stuff, um. Again, catch basins, we we, you know, we could, we could have our whole crew all year just work on catch basin rebuilding. Because, you know, they're metal structures with concrete, again, all the salt runs down them, um. So, yeah, that's kind of a quick overview of that.
Any questions for Ron?
Yeah.
Should we start over?
Yeah, that first point.
Did an excellent job. We got no questions.
Thank you.
Either you did it or we're thoroughly confused.
Yeah.
You pick.
So we had two other funds to go over, solid waste and fiber optics. We kind of covered them, um, begin, uh, in the very beginning, the open, open all. Open opening. Um, solid waste and fiber optics will have no increase in the rate. Uh, solid waste, a couple of the drivers, uh, three percent increase for our, uh, a vendor, um, that provides the the service. Um, and seventeen point five percent increase in tip. Um, uh, so we're basically going to use some of the fund balance in there instead of, uh. All this way, solid waste, uh, has. Helps us to be able to. Um, fiber optics again, we're a million dollars short. Take us about twenty years, I think, we're going to finally get that one even. Um, collectively overall, we got six enterprise funds, uh, four of which, uh, or two of which are going to be requesting, uh, rate increases. Uh, wastewater and surface water are four percent. Um, this. Um, throughout all of the discussions. Um, we have a special meeting on Monday. Where we'll just focus on, uh, the capital improvement plan. All department heads are required to be there. Uh, please be prepared with all of your questions, so it's not us presenting. It's us explaining and answering all of your questions and making sure they'll make any adjustments in the capital improvement plan after that meeting. And then the impact that'll have our, on our budget. Uh, in the last, or the only meeting that we're gonna have in November, uh, we'll cover internal service funds, um, special revenue funds. And show you the changes in the fee schedule. Um, and then, uh, the first meeting in December is our crude and taxation. The second meeting in December is approving everything. Improvement plan, uh. And we got two minutes to spare.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is this coming up or not? Oh, we're good to go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is that, uh, motion adjourned?
Some move.
Some move, Councilmember Swier, second segment, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you much. We'll adjourn for a few minutes and start the call.